All right, we're ready to start the next meeting. All students have their seat, please. All right, with that, welcome to the July 25th, 2023, 6:30 PM City Council meeting. We do have a quorum, so I will call this meeting to order. That was terrible. There. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? And the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for what it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
City Clerk, would you please read the rules to speak?
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments except petitions or requests must address a pending issue and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all items. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a sign-up card identifying the items of interest. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes to speak on the entire consent agenda. All sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to City Council shall be placed in the box on the table.
Thank you, City Clerk. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular city council meetings of April 11th and June 16th, excuse me, and June 13th, 2023.
So moved.
I have a motion from Member Nelson and I have a-
Second.
Second from Vice Mayor. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Minutes accepted. City Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council members. I have two agenda adjustments we'd like to make. Item 9B, which is SSA 1-2023, we'd like to reschedule that agenda item to 12 September
And I would make that motion.
We need a motion to vote on that. I have a motion from Member Nelson.
Second.
Second from Member Stokoe. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? We move.
In the next one, I've provided Council a copy of a letter of support for the Ellis Road project that we received this weekend, and it's a time-sensitive matter. So I'd like to add that to the City Manager's report at the end of the meeting, and that it will be an agenda item on my report now.
Okay, so it's an agenda item. We need to add that. Need a motion to add that?
Motion to add it.
Member Nelson.
Second.
Second. Member Stokoe, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Add it.
We're up to item 6A, which is Board of Adjustments and Appeals. This will be reappoint three regular members. The terms of regular members, Margaret Van Devon, Richard Wheelis, and Gina Beckles, expires on 21, or correction, 31 July 2023. Members Van Devon, Wheelis, and Beckles have expressed their willingness and desire to continue to serve on this board for another two-year term, ending on 31 July 2025. There are no other applications filed for your consideration.
Let me just say off the top, I think this is a board that functions very well, kind of runs like a well-oiled machine, very professional, very well-done, communicates well, and gets the job done, and I appreciate them very much. I see that we have at least one, if not more, out there, and so if you wish to speak, I'd be glad to allow you to do so. Otherwise, we'll-
I'm not going to settle with this. Do you have any questions?
Well, thank you. I would just throw compliments at this point, and really and truly, I just, it's a well-oiled machine, and I appreciate what you do. Thank you. Before going any further, that, well, Counsel, anything you want to say before I go further?
No, I do not. I have read through all, and I concur with what you have just stated, and I want to, when it is appropriate, make the recommendation that we keep-
Three, per your point, the three, correct. Thank you so much. Any cards on this? Thank you very much. Do I have a motion?
I was so moved.
I got a motion. I need a second.
Second.
Got a second. Roll call vote.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
All are approved. Thank you so very much for those that are here. Thank you.
Onto item 6B, which is the North Brevard Library District Board, accept the resignation of North Brevard Library District Board Member Julie Weaver with an unexpired term to expire on 30 September 2023. With regrets, the resignation will be effective on 10 July 2023.
Counsel, anything you want to say to that? We seem to be losing a few library district board members. I think we can address that as we go, but at this point, we'll just deal with this one, regular member Julie Weaver. Vice Mayor?
Yes, in reading over and knowing a little bit about the history that had came along with his, I make the motion that we accept when it's appropriately to do so.
Okay, we're going to hold on that, but he will have that motion. Call the cards, please.
Stan Johnston.
Here we go. Let me, let me just say that this is going to be about the North Brevard Library District Board to accept the resignation. That's what this is going to be.
This is about what's going on here in the city of Titusville?
No, it's going to be about 6B. That's what it's going to be about.
So I'll read this to you. It says, this has to do with what's going on in this business meeting right now, this business being here. I'm asking you-
Stan, you're going to talk about 6B, or I'm going to ask you to be done. That's what it's going to work. Go.
Well, I'm, I believe that you can go ahead and accept the resignation. However, I want you to understand is that due to the city's outrageous misconduct in conference, this is just two sentences, City Council should make major corrections to cities misconduct prior to-
Okay, we're done with that. We're done with that. No, I'm going to tell you right now, you're going to talk about 6B, you're going to talk about everything you sign up for, you're going to have all the opportunity to talk about what you sign up for-
Okay.
But nothing else.
Okay, I think, Mr. Diesel, what you should do is you should recuse yourself, and you're using my time right now, and recuse yourself because you're involved in this-
I'm going to tell you right now, you're going to talk about 6B, or you're going to sit down.
Okay, the thing is, you're using, you're taking my time right now on the clock. You don't even stop the clock. That's not right.
If you're not talking about 6B, you're going to sit down.
You're taking my time right now.
Go. 6B.
On 6B, is it, is a matter of city business, and what I'm saying is that I think that what you should do is stop city business and still you, tell you straight now what's going on, and that would include termination.
Okay, now, let me just stop you there. Stop the clock. I just heard the word termination of city manager. You have the opportunity to talk about that one time, because you know the rules, right, Stan?
I can, it is like, this, this has to do with you.
The rules, no, no, let me go to the citizen, citizen, no, 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 I'm talking now. Citizen shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. There's your once. All comments except petitions or requests must be addressed pending the issue, the agenda item. We've only talked about this for three years. All I ask you to do is talk about what you tell me you're going to talk about when you sign up, and if you can't do that, we're going to move on. So all I'm asking you to do is talk about what you sign up for. You signed up for 6B. I also don't want you to mention anything you've already mentioned, so let's go.
This, this involves what's, what's the dishonesty of the city, and I just think it should be, and anytime, you should be listening to it because you're involved in this.
Got you. Thank you. Any other cards? Let me just say, I don't have this issue, but I'm going to go ahead and make it a general statement. Obviously, I think you know that when you sign up for a agenda item, that's the item you're going to talk about, and when you talk about other things, you're not talking about the agenda item, and we're going to do that. We're going to talk about whatever it is you sign up for, and we will be glad to hear you. That being said, I have no other cards. That's correct.
Correct.
I will look for a motion.
I think Vice Mayor was going to make a motion.
Yeah, you're right. Thank you so much.
I'm making a motion to separate the resignation of the regular member Julie Weaver.
And I will second that.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Passing unanimously, and with regrets, we appreciate Ms. Weaver's service. We move to petitions or requests, so if you have something you want to say in petition or request that's not 6B, agenda item, whatever, this is where you do it, and so petitions Come on up. Come on up. Okay, this is, this is perfect timing, right here.
Yes, my name is Greg Hollinger. Live at 4885 Clover Lane. I've been a resident here about 44 years in Titusville. I love this town. I have five children I'm blessed with and seven grandchildren, and most of them are right here. I just want to thank you all because I know you get a lot of ranting. I'm going to make it quick. You get a lot of ranting and raving from us. Well, you do take care of business, and you do take care of us, and the people do appreciate that. I want to, I'm planting a seed here today. I would hope maybe somehow that we could have a difference of thought pattern about this Royal Oak, and we haven't had a new park for 20 years in this town, and I don't mean to take money from the developers, but we can compensate that. I do believe the people would vote on a referendum to make that a city park. It's something that would be part of our legacy, your legacy, that would live forever here. We need that. Now, another thing is this, the police department here is second to none. They're very young. I bicycle all over the place. I'm one of the guys that actually, I still do sprint triathlons, I'm an old guy, but I bike all the time. You may see me coming out of the space center with my lights blinking at 11, 12 o'clock at night, but I'm going to tell you something. I have been across that bridge a zillion times, and I saw something, I want accolades to the city police department. I've seen this more than once, but there was a man, he was very distraught, and I'm riding my bike across the bridge, and this man was on the other side of the railing. He had his jacket put across the railing, and he did appear like he was extremely distraught, maybe going to jump, and I want to tell you something, since after my long bikes, I usually do about five trips across the bridge back and forth when I can, and so I listened and I watched every time I went by, and these young police officers, I think there were three in total, they must have some pretty good training because most people would come a little unglued, a little excited. They handled it in such a way that I did call the chief's department and left a message with his secretary about it, but I thought I better come before everybody, especially since this is on television, too. I want people to know, respect the police officers. When I was a kid, I was taught to respect authority because it's given to me by God, so let's, let's go with something new here in this town. Let's start realizing these police officers are out there risking their lives every day, and you know something? I just appreciate the amount of training that goes into some of these people's lives. None of us here go out there and have to wear a safety vest to go to work every day, and I'm just here to tell you thank you. I'm going to leave because I don't want to take up your time. I've said everything I want to say, so thank you so much.
Well, if you have more good things, we can know. Police officers and Chief, I know you heard that, and it's nice to hear, and there's a lot of him out there that say that, so I appreciate you very much. Thank you, guys. Thank you for your words. Appreciate it. Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
Elizabeth Baker, Augustine Drive, here in Titusville. I, too, want to say thank you to the police department, code enforcement specifically, for operating very quickly and responding to a complaint about the Walmart store and the large amount of garbage that is piled up everywhere on that property over there. It is years of accumulated garbage that is just, it's, it's in the ground. I mean, it's even in the trees, so they did go out, I believe it was Officer Frank Lewis, and I just want to say thank you for him going out there and issuing a violation, seeing what the problem was and taking care of it. That leading in, I know that the last time I was here, I spoke about the dumpsters behind the business area. It's still a mess, and I really just, I want to see-
Where was that exactly?
Over here behind the downtown area, the set of four dumpsters. I can never remember the name of that street, but, you know, it's adjacent to the park that was recently just in the news, that is full of garbage. You know, the one particular dumpster on the north end of that that gets used the most actually has gaping holes in the bottom of it. I was able to see the presentation from the prior meeting saying that the city does repair those dumpsters, so I really hope that somebody is able to get out there and do that because the whole bottom of it just is spilling with garbage. So if we can just handle that, that would be awesome.
That's awesome. Well put.
Thank you.
Kevin, you got that, I'm sure. Thank you. I appreciate it. Petitions and requests on, almost at the first meeting. Yeah, this is where he can go off.
Stan Johnston, registered professional engineer, and I'm speaking about a project that I've talked to you about a number of times, and here's the, here's a picture of right-of-way of Elizabeth Avenue, and you'll see three black circles. All of these black circles are survey markers.
Stop clock real quick. What's, what's, yeah, Elizabeth Avenue, and what's-
This is Elizabeth Avenue.
What's that road?
Fifty foot wide, so it's just showing the avenue, that's all it's showing, and showing sidewalk, sidewalk, and so forth.
Okay, all right, got you.
All these black circles, like, for example, these are, these are property corners and so forth, like-
All right, go ahead and start.
All six of these, none of them are shown on the survey for SNJ Oaks, none of them, and all of them disagree with the survey of SNJ Oaks, all of them. So what you have is that, now I'm going to show you what the survey shows. The survey shows on this corner up here, it's four foot off, four foot off. On this corner, it's two foot off. So what you have, when I flip it over, is you have a bounty dispute. See that? Says bounty dispute, bounty dispute with the city of Titusville. The city of Titusville does nothing about, nothing about, and you, in other words, the city of Titusville approves the survey, and I also, Brad Parrish just talked to me on March the 10th, and he agreed with me that the survey, that the right-of-way is not 53 feet wide as expressed on the survey, it's only 50 feet wide, and yet, when I, as far as I know, the city still is not having the survey corrected, and so they're out there, they're building the project, all 28 lots of that handling project, every one of them is wrong, every one of them is wrong, and so they're putting construction, they're constructing it with a bad survey, and what I'm saying is, as far as I'm concerned, that's your fault. That's the city's fault. The city's fault. I think that what you should do, I think the owner, what they should do is sue you. They should sue you because I've, I've presented all kinds of information, signed and sealed that the survey is fake, and what do you do? Nothing. I can't believe it. I can't believe why you would do that. You're hurting people, and so they're out there building this thing, and all the lots, every one of them is wrong on the east-west direction, and it's, it's what I showed you. I showed you, it's a big, long strip, four foot off on, over four foot off the southwest corner, it's off, and I went out there with Joe, and I measured from that, where the survey was, and over 50 feet, and it goes right into the sidewalk, goes right into the sidewalk and the other side of the right-of-way. It says, the city of Titusville, what? You've got a boundary dispute that the city of Titusville goes ahead and accepts. This makes no sense at all. I'm asking you to correct it. Oh, no comment.
I did get there. I don't know what I was looking at exactly. We'll talk about that later, but I did get there.
That's horrible. I've been for about two years now.
Any other? Anybody else? All right.
Mayor, Counsel, we're on to consent agenda items, items A through I. City Council, do you have any questions of staff for consent agenda?
I see none.
City Council, do you want to pull any of the consent agenda items?
I see none.
Clerk, is there any cards for consent?
Yes, sir, we have two individuals that would like to speak.
And Mayor, with your permission, I'd like to read the titles for the record.
Thank you so much.
Consent agenda item 8A, approve the award for engineering services for the Blue Hare and Compliance Plan. Consent agenda item 8B, approve the purchase of a replacement reclamation service truck. Consent agenda item 8C, approve the purchase of laboratory discrete analyzers. Consent agenda item 8D, adopt advisability resolution 182023 to vacate the right-of-way, application number 1-2023 for Broad Street. Consent agenda item 8E, San Arno Point Amendment and Declaration and Covenants and Condition Restrictions. Approve those. Consent agenda item 8F, approve the task order for engineering services for the Riverside Drive Force Main relocation. Consent agenda item 8G, approve the morning dove roof and floor drain relocation. Consent agenda item 8H, authorize the staff to apply for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program Application. And consent agenda item 8I, authorize and approve the budget amendment to cover the outside council legal fees.
All right. Nothing else from Counsel right now? Call the cards, please. And her Hawaiian look.
Tony Shifflow, 715 Tropic Street. I want to speak to this Reno Point Amendment of Declaration of Covenants. I don't know why they decided they wanted to take the requirement that homeowners had to get permission or permits to take down trees. I just hate that. I want to talk on budget amendment to cover outside council, this is legal fees. This is the second time since I have cared about what court costs are. I happen to be the treasurer of Speak Up Titusville. I thought I was just a concerned citizen. We were just a group of concerned citizens trying to save the Indian River Lagoon, and it's so far, this is the second time your councilman has asked to have $30,000 taken from the general fund and put to cover outside legal fees. I don't know what outside legal fees you're paying. I assume it has to do something, though, with the court case against my organization, Speak Up Titusville, an organization of concerned citizens. It's just a little nonprofit, and it's already cost us over $25,000 in legal fees, and we still have a court case appeal coming up and a trial, not a trial, but a hearing, that will, of course, encourage more legal fees on our behalf. I don't have a general fund that I can go to and ask for the money. I don't have a father and mother, well, I got my mother, but she, my golly, I can't use her money, she doesn't have that much left. I don't have parents that I can go to and borrow from. I don't know where I'm going to get the money to pay this lawyer that we're having to fight the city to, to just certify the election. Eighty-two percent of the voting public voted for the right to have clean water, and the city not only didn't listen to what the judge said, he made very reasonable and very, very understandable judgment against the city, saying your only duty is to certify the results and get the amendment to the city charter. You don't have to determine whether there's two laws, one in Orange County and one in Brevard County. You don't have to make that determination. Where am I going to get the money to pay the lawyer? Can I get some money out of the general fund to go into our outside legal offenses? Thank you.
Thank you, Shifflow. Next up.
Mr. Diesel, if you don't want me to talk, why don't you just talk with me or any of the other councilmen?
All I want you to do is talk about what you sign up for.
Because he won't do it.
You, I talk to you anytime you show up, and you know that.
You won't talk about the subjects I want to talk about, though.
I don't recall that. I will tell you this, you go ahead and talk about the subjects I need you to talk about because you signed up for them. That's all I'm asking you to do.
Hey, he's using my time.
No, 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 no. Stop the clock. I didn't know she started it. All right.
Yeah. Why don't you start the clock all over again?
No, 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 I'm talking right now. When you come up here and you go and put those cards in, you sign up for something to talk about, like everybody else in here. That's all I'm asking you to do. All right, let's go.
Why don't you start the clock?
Yeah, go ahead and put it back on three minutes for you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. That's, that's right. Okay, so what's going on is I have opposition about a number, a number of items, there's about five items I have, and, well, maybe it's not five, maybe it's only four, maybe it's five, so I can't speak, I only got, I only have three minutes. I was going to talk about D, about vacation of the right-of-way, but I see that it's right up against only, against the railroad, so that doesn't make, I can't object to that, really. I don't see it because it's not going to be used for public parking, so, so that's, that's all right, but however, on these F and H and A, is that I'm against those because, well, especially, let's look, let's look at O, Hazard Mitigation, it says authorize the city manager to act as authorized agent and signer for the grant, I oppose that. I oppose that because look what we've got. See this? $70,000 fraud, $70,000 fraud. So this is this guy right here, $70,000 fraud, $70,000 fraud, right here. If you want to know about it, anybody, newspaper, want to, look, ORB 8506, page 1374, it says right here, city manager, city manager, $70,000 fraud, right here.
Point of order.
What, point of order? Go ahead.
Go ahead, point of order. Stop the clock.
Yeah, do stop the clock while we discuss it. Go.
We're supposed to be talking about the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program Application, and now we've gotten down to the name-calling, has nothing to do with-
Yes, it does. No, 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 no. Go ahead, I'm sorry. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
And I don't think it has anything to do with the grant program application.
Alright, and, and I will say, listen, listen, you have expressed over and over your concerns about many people in the city staff, and that's a concern for you. But what I want to know is what, uh, Member Nelson was talking about, let's get focused on that.
Okay.
You can say, "I, I don't have a problem with that," which is why I didn't stop you. You have problems with your concerns about how people are running things, but that's not where we're at here. So get back to the topic, show us you can talk about the topic.
Okay, alright. Mrs. Nelson, okay, Ms. Nelson, I want you to wake up, wake up.
Stop, stop the clock. You're gonna talk about it, or are you gonna get sat down?
I'm gonna respond to what she said.
You're, you're gonna calm down.
She's not saying what, that's not true.
She said you were point of order, she said you weren't talking about what you're supposed to talk about.
That's not true.
You're gonna, I'm telling you it is, let's stop talking.
No, it's not true, you too, listen up.
You got five seconds to talk about the topic here.
Alright, here's what I said. I said, I said, listen up both of you, Nelson and Mayor Diesel, listen up. Here's what I said, I said, it says, authorize, I'm reading from that, uh, uh, in general, authorize the city manager to act as the authorized agent, and I say, he's not, she shouldn't be acting as authorized agent. I'm telling you right about the fraud, and what do you do? You want to dismiss it. You want to dismiss it. I think the city ought to look into this, read the pages, recorded pages, city manager, fraud, that's him, a fraudster, a fraudster, a hustler, a scyster, liar and a cheat.
You're done, alright.
No, no, I'm not denying.
Have a seat.
I've got time, I've got time, I've got time, I've told you, he should not represent the city in this, on this item.
You talked about him again, that means your second time, I told you, you had one time to talk about him, that's in the rules, if you want to read the rules, you can talk about him one time, it's in the rules.
Okay, I'm talking about you, you and, you and Jill Lynn Nelson.
Alright, now you're gonna have a seat, you've left the topic, have a seat.
Pardon?
Have a seat.
Sit down.
Talk about the topics, I'm asking you to do.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, you have to ju, you...
Stand for print out loud. Have a seat.
No, I'm not gonna do it, I've got time.
Have a seat. I, I ask him to talk about the topic, and I'm asking you to have a seat, that's all I'm asking you to do. And then when you come back, talk about the topic.
No, I have time.
You, you're not talking about the topic. I mean, that's the problem, I'm not gonna do this all night, every night. Talk about the topic.
I'm gonna sit down. Out.
We calm him down, I have no problem with him coming back. All I ask him to do is speak on the topic, and we have a hard time doing that. Calm him down, we'll move back. Uh, where were we? Oh, cards.
Yes, we received one more card from Woody Rice on item D.
Uh, Woody Rice, 505 Indian River Avenue, and it's the right-of-way vacation, uh, really here to answer any questions you have, but when Stan put, said he wanted to talk about that, when I thought I better talk, so. It, uh, my client owns property on both sides of the right-of-way, and the right-of-way's only from Lemon Street to the railroad track, the railroad track is a dead end, doesn't go anywhere. So, uh, I, I would appreciate your support tonight, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Alright, thank you very much.
I feel guilty that, uh, Mr. Rice had to limp his way in here.
He's slow, he used to be a hurdler.
Yeah.
Alright, anybody else? Any other cards? Alright, with that, we will take a five-minute recess, and I'll be back. And then we'll vote on all that stuff. Uh, Stanley.
You're gonna vote when you come back?
Yeah.
Consent agenda. Do I have any more cards on the consent agenda? Do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
I can make a motion, but I also wanted to say yay because reading item H, we're buying two Ford Lightning EV trucks.
Actually ma'am, we're applying for a grant.
We're applying for the grant.
Applying for a grant to buy two trucks.
Which will power a lot of stuff. So moved to approve consent agenda items A through I, and you know I had to say that.
Second, yes.
Have a motion from member Nelson and second from member Stokel, roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Robinson.
Yes.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Member Nelson. Mayor Diesel.
Yes, consent agenda passes, city manager.
Onto item nine A, which is ordinance number twenty-nine, twenty-two-three, White Chaffee Planned Industrial Development. This is the second reading and public hearing for this ordinance. The city attorney will read the ordinance for the record.
Ordinance number twenty-nine, twenty-two-three, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the city's land development regulations to amend standards within the Planned Industrial Development, PID zoning district, for specified properties within the North Brevard Industrial Park and along the Chaffee Drive by amending specified permitted uses with limitations, specifically amending sections twenty-eight dash fifty-four use table, twenty-eight dash ninety-seven automobile repair, twenty-eight dash two zero three building trade services, twenty-eight dash two eleven machine shop, twenty-eight dash two twelve mechanical service and repair, and section twenty-eight dash three sixty-four outdoor storage as an accessory use, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinances, effective date, and incorporation into the code.
The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this ordinance at their regular meeting on nineteen July twenty-two-three, recommended approval six-zero. City council directed staff to draft amendments to the LDRs to address potential conflicts between the city's land development regulations and existing uses in certain areas of the city that are zoned for commercial and industrial uses. The ordinance recognizes that certain modifications to the land development regulations can serve to sustain existing businesses and enhance economic development opportunities within several areas of the city that allow commercial industrial uses. The city's desire is to facilitate compatible commercial and industrial development to promote economic development while ensuring compatibility with existing development patterns. Brad's here to give you a quick update on it. We do have the light art here for your signature mayor, and we're here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Brad.
I gave you a short presentation on this at your last public hearing. I'll try to answer the questions who have it. There have been no changes since your last meeting.
Okay. Counsel? Cards?
One card, Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, I believe I have the right to speak three minutes on this particular topic.
Absolutely.
I'm speaking as a professional engineer. I'm speaking as a resident for over fifty years in the city of Titusville, and a former employee of the city of Titusville as a professional engineer and also licensed as a professional surveyor, which you guys don't listen to, and which I've asked you repeatedly to obtain a professional engineer to dispute my comments about the city's dishonesty, misconduct, various violations of laws and so forth, that involves not just the city manager, but I wrote you, sent you a... Yes.
I'm gonna help you out now. Come on, keep going.
Oh, okay, well, that I wrote you about is that it not only involves the city manager, but involves a human resources department, involves a fire department, involves all council members, involves a little department.
Stan, I really don't want to do this all night. We have nine A, second reading of an ordinance, White Chaffee Industrial Park Development, to amend city land development. I need you to talk about that and not all the history and everything and people who did whatever you think they did. I need you to talk about this. That's all I'm asking you to do. And you are, as you said, a certified engineer. Sometimes I look to you and say, I wonder what he thinks about this, and I can't really get that most of the time. What do you think about this? Start the clock.
Well, thank you. But I've mentioned to you about the comprehensive plan, and this involves the comprehensive plan. I've written you a number of emails about it, and that there's so many errors in our comprehensive plan that I pointed out and that the city is not, not looking to. So I believe that what the city should do is stop the business on what's going on and to adjourn this meeting would be more appropriate to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other cards on this? All right, I will take a motion.
Motion approved, ordinance number twenty-nine dash twenty-two-three, White Chaffee Planned Industrial Development.
Have a motion from member Nelson.
Are you second?
Second from vice mayor, roll call vote on this ordinance.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson.
Yes.
All right, motion passes, obviously. City manager.
As a reminder, SSA number one dash twenty-two-three has been rescheduled to twelfth September twenty-two-three. We're now on item ten A, which is ordinance number thirty, twenty-two-three, repealing section number eleven, three seventy-nine solicitation in the right of way, and the city attorney will read. This is your first reading of this ordinance.
So just a reminder, I believe the next two A and B are first readings and no action or no vote.
Correct. Ordinance number thirty, twenty-two-three, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by repealing section eleven dash three seventy-nine solicitation on right of way, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions, incorporation into the code, severability, and effective date.
Staff, anything? Anything else? Okay, counsel, any questions? All right, call the card.
One card, Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, I'm a registered professional engineer, and I'm here as a professional engineer, and if you wish to remove me, you can do that. I did not appreciate what happened just recently. In fact, but people don't know, this isn't the first time it's been removed, but this is the first time it's been on video, because the city last time, what they did is they destroyed the video.
Stop the clock, stop the clock. This is what happens, Stan. Let me just repeat. I ask everybody in here, when they sign up for something and put a card in, put it in. We pull the card, we expect someone, whoever it may be, to talk about the topic. In this case, it's about repealing section eleven, three seventy-nine. Basically, it's about people in the road, and we're trying to see how to handle that better. And this isn't about anything else right now. So that being said, I, and as far, well, I'm not going to get into all that, but I'm just going to say I'm going to ask you to talk about this particular topic, realizing too, this is a first reading, no action, no vote. I just would like to hear people's opinions on what they think about the solicitation and the right of way and how to deal with it. And that's all I want to do. Thank you, start the clock.
I believe this is a quasi judicial item.
It's a first reading.
Thank you, pardon?
It's a first reading.
Isn't it going to be a quasi judicial?
It's a legislative.
No action, no vote.
This is a legislative act.
Will it be quasi judicial at the next meeting? That's what it says at the beginning, it says.
It says, first readings.
Public hearing and related action quasi judicial.
That was for item B, that was moved.
Oh, it was only for item B, okay, all right, it's not quasi judicial. Okay, thank you. Thank you for that correction. So I don't need to, so anyhow.
People in the road.
Beg your pardon?
People in the road.
People in the road, and I've hitchhiked quite a bit. I've hitchhiked across the United States seven times.
You talked about that last time, I remember.
Okay, and maybe they just don't want it in the city of Titusville. But the thing is, it may be a problem. It could cause hazards, depends on how you hitchhike. Just do it right. I can teach you if you want to. But we might get arrested. Anyhow, so I'm against this ordinance at this time. Maybe there, I think there needs to be a strong justification that it is a hazard and it shouldn't be done, and that there's a problem enough that we make a law about it, because I think we already have laws about it already. So.
This is repealing the law.
It's repealing our law right now.
Okay, I hope when you repeal it, it doesn't make it worse, because maybe it'll make it worse, because you just don't know. So anyhow, so you've got my ideas, and I think that the main thing you need to do is that what I've asked you to do before is that in the case of what's going on with the city, is that I think it's appropriate for you mayor to recuse yourself.
I got you.
That this other, what happened just a few minutes ago. Thank you.
Real quick, real quick, and you did a good job of talking about topic, I appreciate it, but I also want you to know it's not just hitchhiking.
It's not just what?
It's not just hitchhiking. It's when people are out in the road, and maybe they're running up and trying to clean your window, or maybe they're trying to, so that's what this is about too.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
Okay, any other card? All right, there is no vote, no action, city manager.
Onto item ten B, which is small scale comprehensive plan amendment, SSA number six dash twenty-two-three through sixteen twenty-five Tropic Street. This is the first reading, city attorney will read for the record.
This item includes both a land use change and rezoning. There are two ordinances that I will be reading. Ordinance number thirty-one, twenty-two-three, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number sixty dash nineteen eighty-eight, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the city of Titusville. By amending the future land use map, by changing the land use designation on approximately seven point zero three plus or minus acres of property located south of Tropic Street and west of South Dixie Avenue, having Brevard County Partial ID number twenty-two, thirty-five, zero four, zero zero two three, from the low-density residential to the high-density residential future land use designation, providing for an effective date. Ordinance number thirty-two, twenty-two-three, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending ordinance number five, nineteen ninety-three, of the city of Titusville, by amending the zoning map made a partisan ordinance by reference by changing the single-family medium-density R-one-B zoning district to the multifamily high-density residential R-three zoning district on approximately seven point zero three plus minus acres of property located south of Tropic Street and west of South Dixie Avenue, having Brevard County Partial ID number twenty-two, thirty-five, zero four, zero zero two three, and providing for an effective date.
Staff recommends denial of the amendments to the comprehensive plan, future land use map from low-density to residential to high-density residential. This is a legislative item. On the quasi judicial item, planning and correction, staff recommends denial of the request to rezone the property from single-family medium-density to multifamily high-density residential zoning district. The Planning and Zoning Commission, acting as your local planning authority, considered this item at their nineteen July twenty-two-three meeting and recommended denial of the request based on it is not consistent with the future land use policy one dash fourteen dash four and policy number one dash fourteen dash six. The motion to deny was approved six-zero. Mr. Parrish is here to answer any questions that you may have on this, this is your first reading.
Any comments first?
I'd just refer you to page two twenty-seven of your packet. I won't go through the report, I'll just refer you to that image, that future land use map that shows the existing and proposed land use, and you can see the difference of what's being proposed here on page two-two-seven of your packet. You'll see the existing, the property has the existing land use of low-density residential, which has a maximum build-out potential of five units per acre, which is about thirty-five units or lots. And then you also, what they're proposing is to change it to a high-density residential, which allows a maximum build-out potential of fifteen units per acre or about a hundred and five residential units. We believe it's incompatible and also does not meet the locational criteria and the policies of the comprehensive plan. And then also the zoning district has the same issue. With that, I'll turn and answer any questions you have.
Well, the first thing I would say that comes to mind to me is that sometimes it seems to people that we approve anything that comes along and everything's fine, and it's nice to hear you say that we don't think it fits, it's not the way it should be. It's just not where we need to go. So I appreciate you guys looking that over as closely as you did. Any other questions on the small-scale comp plan amendment? City vice, nope, vice mayor.
Yes, I'm familiar with the area, and I have been over there numerous times in moving people in and out of different homes and so forth over there. And I agree with staff recommendations, is to put more traffic in that area would be hazardous in many, many ways, I think.
Yeah, I agree, well done. Anybody else? Member Stokel, no?
No, I was just going to say I appreciate the staff report with both the future land use map and the zoning as to why.
Okay, call card.
We have two cards, Tony Shifalo.
Tony, I know you don't want to grow over there.
Shifalo, seven fifteen Tropic Street. There are so many reasons to deny this flu and zoning request that I hardly know where to begin, so I'll just start with some background. In October twenty-fourteen, this property was bought in a tax sale for thirty-eight thousand four hundred dollars by the Miami-based Sammy Investment LLC. It was held this way until twenty-nineteen, when Resum Investment LLC was formed and the land was transferred by quick claim deed. The registered agents are the same for both companies, so this Miami-area group has held the land since twenty-fourteen. Most of the surrounding single-family homes were built in the nineteen fifties. Even the apartment units on Rock Pit Road, built in the nineteen eighties, predate the purchase of this land. The investors should have seen the type of area they were buying into. Now they come up to Titusville with a request so out of line with the community in which they want to invest that even staff recommended the flu and zoning changes be denied. How often does staff do that for us? P and Z held a very comprehensive hearing last week in which the applicant offered very little information about the plans for this heavily forested acreage, other than wanting to change the zoning from the reasonable low-density, single-family units, which would accommodate up to thirty-five homes on this area, to maximum multi-unit high-density, which would allow a hundred and five units. The applicant did a few studies to satisfy requirements for traffic, schools, and ecological impacts, one twenty-four-hour traffic study in January, and one actual engineering inspection of the property on one dry day in January, and those reports came back with data for only ninety-nine units, not a hundred and five, and of course, findings complementary to the applicant. No wildlife, no problem with traffic, no impact on schools. Despite data showing existed forested wetland, a Claremont-based consultant found no wetlands and no wildlife. I suggest he come back during wet season to check the ground. The traffic studies show little increase based on ninety-nine units, but would be difficult to accommodate on Tropic, a local narrow two-lane street with only two stop signs on the whole stretch we're talking about, one at Park and one at Singleton, nothing else. I can see the stretch of forested land along Tropic from my historic Norwood House, and I know I would see the increased traffic and the sudden lack of all those trees. And here I disagree with staff's report on item number five about public health and safety. The loss of most of those trees will have significant impact on the ecology of the environment. I need one more minute exactly.
I'd like to grant one more minute, so moved.
It will have significant impact on the ecology of the environment and be detrimental to both the physical and mental health of the entire area and all the residents. The applicant's only claim to contingency to other R-three properties is Rock Pit Road, which is specially designated for multi-units on a city street, and we all know the crime stats for Rock Pit Road. Overcrowding and lack of access to city amenities creates dire straits. Across the street residents who are here testified that they received no notice of a meeting, and the one neighbor who did went to the meeting, he was the only one there, and he reported not having any more idea about future plans than before, as the investor had no real plans. So the property on Tropic Street should remain zoned as it is, and the future land use should not be changed so that some outside developers can come in with a profit motive rather than a desire to improve an economically depressed area. Uphold the advice of your advisory committee, your planning and zoning. Thank you.
Correct, thank you, thank you very much, well-stated and very informative, thank you. Any others?
Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, a professional engineer that sometimes was apparently removed from the podium for what I believe is unfair misconduct by our city mayor. So here's what's going on, is that this is on Tropic Street, and I mentioned the last time I spoke on this. By the way, is this or is this not a quasi judicial item?
This is a first reading. There's a comprehensive plan change, which is a land use change, which is legislative. The rezoning would be quasi judicial, and those public hearings will be at the next meeting.
Well, it seems like it would be quasi judicial, because it's going to be, finally, it's quasi judicial. Maybe this is not quasi judicial, but it just seems like people should know, because if they lie a little bit, it can be perjury.
Well, that's why we do a first reading.
And I don't want to even lie a little bit.
That's why we do a first reading, so, and a lot of people.
So in other words, people can commit perjury now.
No, a lot of people who do first readings don't even let public speak. We like to hear what you have to say.
Well, in other words, I don't want to be colored by something that's untrue. So I believe it should be considered quasi judicial. I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God, and the guys at Shyster and all that other stuff too. But in this particular case, is that I mentioned about the right of way of Tropic Street, I mean, it goes right almost up to the curb. It's not even noted. Did you hear what I said? The writer goes, where are you going to put sidewalk? How are you going to get sidewalk to Rock Pit, or how are you going to get sidewalk to Park Avenue? Shouldn't that have been mentioned? I think so. Everybody's quiet. My goodness. I mean, how about our staff waking up? Wake up! Okay, and wake up about some other things, because right now, as your comprehensive plan, which this is talking about, has got all kinds of errors in it that I continually bring to your attention, but our mayor and our council continue to ignore because our city manager apparently is telling you, do not, do not listen to what he says and just object to it, and do not get, do not hire a professional engineer to tell you that Stan Johnston is telling the truth. You've got problems that you do not address. Shame on you.
Stop.
Shame on you.
You were doing really good, keep talking about this.
Well, that's what I'm talking about. This has to do with the comp plan, and you got errors in the comp plan, water flows downhill, I want you to understand that, but not on the comp plan. Water flows downhill, that's my job. Football coach should understand that. Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you.
Take care.
All right, where were we? Oh, this is on the vote one. Any other cards? All right, we don't vote on this, so we move on to the next one.
There is no old business, we're on new business, item number twelve A, which is the proposed tentative operating millage. And there's several items that you'll have to vote on tonight, including the millage, the tentative millage rate, the riverfront acquisition, referendum millage rate, the series two thousand and five general obligation bonds, and then also set your public hearings, which are recommended for sixth September and twenty-one September. So first, set the tentative operating millage rate for FY twenty-twenty-four budget at six point seven nine four five mils, which is six point nine percent above the rolled-back rate, millage rate of six point three five two one mils. Set the debt service millage rate for the riverfront acquisition referendum at point two two three four mils. The maximum levy authorized by the series two thousand and five general obligation bonds is point five three zero mils. Additionally, staff is recommending that you set your public hearings for sixth September and the final public hearing on twenty-one September. You have the budget book provided to you, and we've also provided you a spreadsheet of the area's cities and their proposed millage rates as we go through the budget process.
Member Stokel.
Will this be one vote, or will we need to do three separate votes for the mils and then a vote for?
Three, three different votes.
Can we do one vote for both hearings, or would that be two?
Yeah, you can do one vote for the hearings, yeah.
Okay, so four different, okay, thank you.
Anything else from counsel on what we just heard? No.
Yeah.
Yeah, please, Chris, yeah, go ahead.
I understand that our budget is balanced at six point seven nine four five mils, and I think that's great. And this is, I believe I talked to Mr. Larissa about it, and I'm sure there are lots of things to help the river in the budget. things to help the river in the budget. But my question, I guess, is, do we want to make it a little bit more than that? Because when we do our real vote, we can come back. And if there are projects that we want to do, we would have the wiggle room to do those. That's just a suggestion.
So if I may, ma'am, we have done a lot of projects because of the ARPA funds injection. I'm not sure, the capital program that we have proposed here, I'm not sure we can do anymore this year. Because we've got several huge projects that are going on. As an example, the Forest Main project from South Street all the way to the plant, we've got some Forest Main relocations in there in the capital program, and I'm just not sure we can take on any more projects during FY 24.
And I think we also are working toward a project to get the sewer lines off of the river over by Titusville High School.
Correct.
Okay. That was just my thought.
Members Stokel.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, because I feel like we have done a lot, made a lot of progress. My only concern would be, I think, I remember when we, the three of us got elected all at the same time, then Vice Mayor joined us. My biggest goal at that point in time was our millage rate was higher, and I felt like the way to solve that and to try to lower it, which is lower taxes for our citizens, would be to try to generate revenue, which I feel like we've done a really good job with all the development that we've had. So my goal, as we get into budget season every year, is to see how much we can lower it, and then bringing in more tax base as, and that's what's been happening, honestly. So we're able to lower it, but we're still bringing in more money. So that's kind of the direction I would like to see us continue to go into, but being very mindful of making sure, as we are getting more people, that we have the appropriate infrastructure.
And I have to say, the staff has done a great job, city manager's done a great job. I sort of feel like we're headed in the right direction, without a doubt, so thank you. I don't tell you that very often. But I think as a result of us and the city pushing some of the infrastructure projects, that we are way far ahead of where we were when we started, so.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, all that I've heard and from that has been said, one of the things that we must always keep in mind, we are, we have so much uncertainty with our economy and inflation, we have to take these steps, and my explanation, the explanation that I've received thus far has satisfied, you know, my concerns, some of them, because of inflation that is facing us and how we're going forward.
Anybody else? Members Stokel.
All right, one last thing, and I wrote this down in my notes in our one-on-one. This is the lowest millage rate we've had in over 15 years, so I thought that was pretty cool-
That's right.
-to see that. I just wanted to make note of that.
Lowest millage rate in over 15 years. That's, well, it certainly helps to have growth in tax bases. Yes, it does. Fantastic. Nobody else? Call cards on the operating millage, et cetera.
Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, a professional engineer and a 50-year resident of the city of Titusville, five generations of my family lived here, five generations of my wife's family lived here. And you see this again, I'm showing this to you again, remember this? It's the four-way test for the rotarians. We have a rotarian right here, we have a rotarian here, and so forth. Are you a rotarian also?
I don't know if I can tell. Yes.
Well, anyhow, the rotarian, remember, is the force, the four-way test is, is it the truth? Is it fair to all concerned? Will it build goodwill and better friendships? Will it be beneficial to all concerned? Now, what's going on in this particular millage is that I have repeatedly asked for things to be done, repeatedly, and you're not doing anything. For example, you have, it's been over almost two years now. What is this? What does it say? It says fake survey. Fake survey. City's still having fake survey, they're not doing anything about it. Fake survey. I signed and sealed it, saying it's a fake survey. What do you do? What do you do? What do you do? Nothing. So it should be on, you should, I've asked you to get, hire a professional engineer, somebody who will dispute what I'm saying. So what else do you have? You had, you had what? Spring, women and children, look at that. Julie Nelson especially, take attention to that.
Stop the clock.
No, this is-
Stop the clock. Tell me how that's got to do with the millage. I want to know if you think the millage is too high, too low. That's what I want you to do, Stan.
The budget is not taking care of these issues. The budget is not. For example, resilient Titusville, right here, Brad Parrish, and I put a complaint against him and Eddie Galindo, human resources. So what does he do? What does this guy over here? Your city manager, he takes it, throws it away. So in other words, water flows downhill in the city of, as far as I'm concerned, but not in the city of Titusville. You violate the law again and again. Water flows downhill. I'm asking you to have some common sense. Do something right on this. Another thing. What was this other? This thing right here. What does it say? It says fraud. It says fraud about him.
Millage. No, don't talk about him.
No, the thing is, the city of Titusville- You need to look, you need to have inspection. You need more. Are you listening? I said inspection on city roads.
Good, okay.
All right. And it needs to be done. You have false reports about your sewage spills, false reports about your resilient Titusville. You just, what you do is just manipulate them. For example, I complain about something that city does, take it to human resources, it's just erased, and you guys will not take it up.
And that's got to do with what part of the rates on the millage care?
Well, in other words, what I'm saying is that these rates do not reflect what I have repeatedly asked the city to do, that costs some money, like hire a PE, tell the truth, obey the laws, and so forth like that. I mean, it seems like somebody like in legal department would have the city obeying the laws. Thank you. I'm opposed.
Okay. Where were we? Any other cards? All right, we then need to move forward with a motion.
Move to-
We have several motions here, don't we?
Can I do it as one?
Yeah, what I, you could do the two millages or the three millages together if you get the numbers correct, and then also the dates, but you-
You have no faith?
You'll need to identify the millage rate as the riverfront acquisition, as the tentative-
Move to approve the proposed tentative operating millage at 6.7945, and the proposed tentative voted debt service millage at .2234 mils, and the maximum levy authorized by Series-
Member Nelson, can I get you? On the agenda, it sets forth the mils, and it sets forth 6.96% above the rollback millage rate of 6. It'd be important to have all that set forth, so if you're going to make that motion, all that language could be taken from the front of your agenda.
Move to set the proposed tentative operating millage rate for the fiscal year 2024 budget at 6.7945 mils, which is 6.96% above the rollback millage rate of 6.3521. Set the voted debt service millage rate at .2234 mils, and the maximum levy authorized by Series 2005 general obligation bonds at .5930. Does that work?
That's it.
Okay.
I have that motion without trying to repeat it. From Member Nelson, I have a second. From Member Stokel, roll call vote.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Passes.
Okay.
Keep going.
And then move to set the first public hearing for the fiscal year 2024 budget on September 6, 2023, at 5:30 PM at City Hall, and the second and final public hearing for the fiscal year 2024 budget on September 21, 2023, at 5:30 at City Hall.
Second.
Got a motion from Member Nelson, a second from Member Stokel. Roll call vote.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Passed unanimously. Is there anything further on that?
Yes.
All right then, city manager.
Onto item 12B, which is the advisability to research the use of speed enforcement cameras in school zones. Florida Senate Bill 588 took effect on 1 July 2023. This bill authorizes local governments to place automated speed detection cameras in the school zones for the purposes of enforcing violators. In the state of Florida, there's been drastic increases in traffic violations during active school zones, which creates an increase in injuries to school staff, children, and citizens. This citizen, this Senate bill is giving local governments the opportunity to leverage technology in order to keep school zones safer, and this is, again, an advisability, if you would like for us to research and bring something back to you to use this technology. And Chief Lau, and Matt, or not Matt, it's Sergeant, or Major now, Gonzalez.
Well, guys, look forward to hearing what you have to say about this one.
So, yeah, the reason we wanted to come, this is very similar of starting like the red light cameras, and then the red light cameras took a turn that just, you know, went off. When the red light cameras first were, came to, as an option, we were very much in favor. Then, when the state got involved and it got all distorted, there was a lot of drama in politics. We're not for that. So really, what we wanted to do before we started even investigating and sniffing around, we just wanted to have buy-in from the city to see if this is something that, you know, you want us to do. Major Gonzalez has some statistics, very raw, from probably 30,000-feet statistics, but it truly is a problem, and that's the first thing we want to ask, is are we having a problem? I'm going to turn it over to Major.
Good evening. So that is exactly what this is, just leveraging technology, it's kind of a force multiplier. One of the number-one complaints in the city is traffic. We're very serious about traffic safety, especially for our kids in the school zones. What we're looking at is doing some traffic studies in the school zones, because HB 657 is what is authorizing this now, which the state of Florida now allows speed cameras to issue citations. The interesting part of it is, it's not a uniform traffic citation, which is, if you're going 10-plus miles an hour over the speed limit in a school zone, it's a $300 ticket with points. The speed cameras with HB 657, they're civil citations, $100. 60 of that goes to the, it's actually dictated by state statute, goes to the municipality. So in these speed cameras, they cost zero to the public. It's paid for through the violators, so they'll put the cameras up at no cost. Currently, we're ranked, I believe, 26th in Group 2 in the state of Florida, which is out of about 85 other cities that have a population up to 75,000. We're about 26th in pedestrian and bicycle, either fatalities or serious injuries with crashes.
It should also be noted, although we have many school zones, we're not talking about every school zone. We probably have identified four that are continuing problems. And again, the study would allow us to see if it is true and valid or not, and then so before we ever went forward with it, so.
Members Stokel.
Yes, okay, just a couple clarifying questions. So if I'm hearing you correctly, the state is giving money for cameras at this point, or are they giving money for us to do a study? Or are we just doing this on our own because of this potential, this law, I guess, now?
So this law makes it possible to use speed cameras in school zones. These are private companies now. They will put the cameras up at no cost, because it probably will generate revenue, but that's not why we're doing this. As a matter of fact, if we don't have a problem, we wouldn't use them, or we would take them down. The whole point is to stop the speeding in the school zones. And in Georgia, there's about four districts right now, they have about a 90% success rate, so meaning it lowers speeding by about 90%, and it has about a 2% appeal rate.
And so are these tickets generated automatically from the cameras, then?
And it would, yes, but it has to be reviewed by a law enforcement officer, so-
And so the first step would be for, and that was, I guess, my general first question is, do we have a problem, which you addressed? And so this would be advisability to see, do we have a problem? And then knowing what we have or don't have, then we could see, is the camera the best option? Is there something else, a better option? Like, that is what this advisability would be for?
If, yeah, if Major Gonzalez and his crew, after looking into this, said, "Yeah, this seems like something we should pursue," that's when we would come back with specifics-
Okay.
-for the council to dive into. There are several vendors in this game, so it would be researching that and then researching the data. The other thing I think is important, we have a take-home car program, and part of the take-home car program is when we're having issues with traffic, a lot of times, right after Thanksgiving and to the holidays, when you're off, you park your car, and we have our ghost cars, as everyone has probably seen around the city. We do that in school zones all the time. So we are parking, cars not being used to slow traffic down, so we're trying everything we can. We cannot have an officer in every single-
Yeah, and that's the other thing I was going to say.
It's literally impossible. And we now have technology, we got a grant a couple months ago, and what you used to see going across the street is like a rubber hose, that counts and all. Everything is now electronic, and we have a little device that's about that big that will tell us speeds, the time of day, you know, I mean, it's amazing the data we can have. So we'll be able to come back to the council with very, very specific data. It would be wonderful if we said, "Wow, we really don't have a problem, we're all safe." We don't think that's what-
Yeah, and that's my thing. I want to try not to be too invasive, but at the same time, especially as we are growing, I want to be more aware and knowledgeable about what is happening. Obviously, I think we all drive around town, but we can't be everywhere, so I think having some data to make a data-informed decision would be beneficial.
If I may, these cameras aren't gotcha, right? That's not the intent. It only issues at 30 minutes prior to the start of school and 30 minutes after school, specific school zone, and it only issues at over 10 miles an hour. So if you don't five over, you could still be stopped by a police officer, but the camera's not going to issue citations. So it's not to go, "I gotcha." That is definitely not our intent.
And just like the red light cameras, as we discussed, there was, it was proof that it was lowering the accidents at high-risk intersections, and that's what we were after. Once the state got involved and it became a uniform traffic citation, that's when everything just, it just didn't work, and we, you know, stepped away, because now the program is no longer working the way it was sold. So it's the same thing here. We see the value, the way the House bill is written now, or the Senate bill? House bill?
HB 657.
As long as it stays that way, we would be very interested in lowering the speeding and making it safer. And we are Brevard County and Orange County. Orange County is number one in the state for pedestrian?
Yeah, well, so it kind of depends on what group you're in, but right now Daytona's up there along with, is it over by, just south of Fort Myers, I think they're number one right now.
So there's far too many pedestrians getting struck by vehicles in Brevard County, specifically North Brevard.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, I continue the line of concerns. I think we would be totally remiss if we don't pursue this and inquire into it, because our children in every area should be our number-one priority, so that's my, you know, I know that I got you is going to come up a lot, but the children and doing this and see what, and I know, I would imagine Titusville High is one of the concerned areas because of their, on US 1.
US 1, yeah.
But I think it's a great thing that we should inquire and find out, and I know that we have to get to a point that we prove that we can use them and they will be to our advantage to solve some of the issues that we have within our city. Until that happens, we don't have anything.
So by and large, we don't have children crossing US 1, and that is a state road. It was pointed out by our staff earlier when we were talking about this, that we wouldn't be able to put them there, but Hopkins Avenue, Dairy Road, Knox-McRae has three schools on it. Um, Knox McCray is the, uh, probably one of the largest. And really, the one that's scary is if you've ever been up at South Lake, uh, Garden Street, just west of I ninety-five, the, the residents don't realize it. They're going to work and, and they turn, they're getting ready to get on the interstate and, and, you know, they're thinking of their day. It's not like a malicious thing, it's just, so those are the areas of concern. And we do have a significant amount of, of kids walking or riding bikes there. So those are the areas. Was there any others, or?
Those are the ones that were going to be covered. It's going to be where kids are crossing the, kids are crossing the actual, the roadway, Sisson Roads one, we get. And, and the reason this came up is when we, uh, went around talking to our crossing guards, their number one complaint, speed, and they see it every day.
That's good. I, I, go, go, go forward.
Mayor, if I could add some information, uh, under this new law, so everyone understands, in order to authorize the placement of installation of these speed detection systems, it has to be enacted by an ordinance. So you have to have a public hearing. As part of the public hearing on the proposed ordinance, the city must consider traffic data or other evidence supporting the installation and operation of each proposed school zone speed detection system. And the city must determine that the school zone where a speed detection system is to be placed or installed constitutes a heightened safety risk that warrants additional enforcement measures pursuant to this law. So they're going to have to get the data and establish that to you as part of public hearing before you are going to authorize the detection system. What you do, it's very lengthy law of all the processes and procedures that will come with that.
At the stage that we're at, I'd, I'd be hard pressed not to say, let's investigate and, and move forward to where we're at. We're not voting to say, do this, we're saying, let's look at it. I think it'd be one of those things where you, you'd be remiss if you later said, gosh, I, I wish we had done that. And I'd rather, I, I, I don't want to be that one that we don't do it and say, man, we should have done that. So, and that's how I look at it. I don't, I don't see this as a, a, a difficult situation to advise that we move forward and decide. Ultimately, for me, I want to, you, you're going to tell me how to, how, how we do this, because I'm not, I, I don't, that's not my lane. And I want you to tell me, we need this, or you to tell me, this, this isn't something we need. So that's kind of where I'm at. So that's how I, I'll, I'll end up going with this thing. Uh, anybody else? I, I, clearly, and, help me out, uh, I'd say attorney, I guess, because the advisability is, I think, uh, there's four of us and we all said, let's do this. Does that mean we need a vote or we advised?
Yes, sir, you would need, uh, to vote if there's a motion to move forward with traffic studies. As again, if they're going to come back to you eventually with an ordinance, to even consider doing this, they're going to have to provide you at that time, uh, the data and analysis
Absolutely.
regarding the heightened safety risks. I believe the officers are asking, the chief is asking for authority to move forward to begin the studies to come back to you.
Yes, and, and most of the vendors in this lane, uh, most of vendors actually do this for us. They would work with the city attorney's office with, you know, prepared, that's what they do. Um, so it's not like we would have to, you know, really get out the pencil, um, and, and start sketching, so that's, that's all. And again, if this becomes where it, it's too much for, for what we're getting, then we just move away from it. And, and it's just not a project that we would do.
Uh, Member Nelson?
I was just going to say, I agree with you guys. Do have a question. Does the speeding ticket show up on your driver's records?
It's, it does not accumulate points.
No, it does not.
Okay.
All right, uh, call the card on the school
Stan Johnston?
On the little kids.
Uh, Stan Johnston, I'm a professional engineer and, and I have a job of to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the public. That's very similar to our police officers. I say that because the city of Tyusville is interfering with my job. But in this particular case, uh, of the, of the, of the cameras on, in school zones is I'm, I'm not against it, not against it, but I think it's ironic, ironic that we spend so much time, uh, on talking about, uh, laws and obeying laws and so forth like that. And when I come up to the city hall and I, I, I clearly show violation of laws of even fraud, false reports and so forth, and report them, and the city does nothing for them about it. I think this is ironic and it's, uh, sort of, um, it's not right. So I'm just letting you know it's not right, and that's all I have to say right now.
Thanks, Stan.
And you should straighten up.
Thanks, sir. Um, next card? All right, I guess we need a motion.
Move to approve advisability for Tyusville Police Department to move forward with the traffic study in school zones by utilizing spit, speed enforcement cameras.
Second.
Motion from Member Nelson, second from Member Stokel. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Nelson? Mayor Diesel?
Yes. Pass it, what, the advisement passes unanimously. City Manager?
Yes, sir. Onto item twelve C, which is approval of the final plat and acceptance of covenants and performance bonds and easements for Brooks Landing Phase One. This is a quasi-judicial matter. The city attorney will read the quasi-judicial procedures for this matter.
During this public hearing portion of the meeting on this quasi-judicial item, anyone wishing to speak must first sign a public hearing agenda card and sign the oath contained thereon. These cards are located on the table at the entrance to the chamber. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you desire for the city council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the city clerk. City clerk, of all persons wishing to speak before the city council signed an oath card swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes, sir.
Staff and to the applicant, have all witnesses that intend to speak sign an oath card swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
If there's anyone present who has not signed an oath card that wishes to speak on the quasi-judicial item, please submit a card at this time. City clerk, have all agenda items been properly advertised?
Yes, sir.
In the event that a council member has received an ex parte communication, either verbal or written, outside the hearing, the council member shall disclose the identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place and the subject of the communication, including all opinions or facts discussed. Any written communication must be disclosed and made a part of the record. Also, in the event that a member has conducted an investigation or site visit or received any expert opinions regarding this item, said visitor opinion shall be disclosed.
Anybody? I have none. Nope.
Brooks Landing is, uh, Phase One, is a proposed eighty-one lot, single-family subdivision located north of JJ Row and west of Hammock Road. The overall Brooks Landing subdivision consists of a hundred and forty-three lots on approximately seventy-one point nine-nine acres. The final plat for Phase Two will be submitted in the near future. The Planning and Zoning Commission considered this request at their nineteen July twenty-twenty-three meeting and recommended approval with staff's recommendations, along with the comment that the applicant should address the changing, by changing the covenant and restrictions to remove section four point zero eight in reference to the MSTU, MNSBU. The motion was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission six-zero. Mr. Parrish is here to introduce the item to you and this quasi-judicial matter.
The council members, this was approved through a plan, development rezoning process several years ago, uh, with several conditions. Then a sketch plat was provided to us with your approval, and then they went forward, consistent with that rezoning, and then they went forward with a preliminary plat and site plan, um, under construction, and now they're going forward with the final plat of a portion of the, uh, approved development. And so there will be another phase that will come later. The P and Z made the recommendation to remove that section four point eight from the declarations I've handed to you, uh, was revised by the applicant in response to P and Z's recommendation. Staff does not have an objection to the change. Um, so with that, I'll turn and answer any questions you have about this project and the, uh, discussion that was made at the P and Z meeting.
And the Mylar is present?
And, yes, thank you. The Mylar is here. I'm sorry.
Okay.
And it has been signed by the surveyor.
Uh, Member Nelson?
I did have one question. Uh, if you go to six point oh-two J, it also talks about the MSBU, to encourage, cause, facilitate, assist, or cooperate in the formation, establishment, and operation of a community development district, or MSBU, or MSTU. Shouldn't that be removed also?
Which section again? It's six point?
It's six point oh-two J.
Apologize, attorney, get that to encourage, cause, uh, we can, we didn't have, the staff didn't recommend this change. Um, the applicant was responding to P and Z's recommendation, so
It would make it consistent.
If they, yeah, we can, if they want to remove one section, then it should be the other section too.
Uh, like just remove ES, MSBU, MSTU?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Anything else from, uh, staff or any questions for staff? I see none. Uh, applicant? Do we have an applicant? Who's the applicant? Applicant, come on up. Quasi, you get to go now and you get to go after cards.
Good evening, my name is Megan Wilbur, I'm the applicant, um, from Orlando, Florida. So we have no objection for moving any further language from the covenants that speak to the MSBU, MSTU portion of the covenants.
Okay, very good. Any other questions for applicant?
Nope.
Anything, anything want to add? You're good?
I'm good.
Okay, well, may I call you back up? Appreciate it, thank you.
Ms. Megan, could I ask you to fill out a card for me? Thank you.
And with that, um, would you call the card?
We have Jenny Scrag, I believe.
Hi, my name is Jenny Scrag, I live on JJ Road. And, um, I live on the east side of JJ, on the JJ Road, on the Brooks Landing, and the past year and a half has been terrible for we live. You know, they cleared all the trees off, but one that left way up on US one. And when the wind blows down the west, our pole barn is full of dust, our vehicles have been full of dust, uh, our pool, my pool furniture, everything. I'm, I'm not a clean freak, but I do like things clean. And it's been terrible to keep that, keep everything clean. And, um, we also went to every meeting that was presented for Brooks Landing, um, even when Chad had the development, we went to all those meetings. They never did tell us they were going to build that up six foot high. And now, my husband and I live down here and that development's up here. And then, there's no way Randy and I can put up a privacy fence, because it wouldn't do us any good. And I would, um, like for, um, the developer to put us up a privacy fence on lot ninety-seven through one oh-three, so at least we'd have some privacy. I mean, they've just cleared everything off. And I'd just like for them to consider doing that for us, to adding that to the plat, or to do something like that for us. So that's why I'm here to the meeting, if anyone has any questions for me.
Well, thank you for sharing that. I, I can understand your quandary. Um, and we'll get back to the applicant and when cards are done, but thank you for that.
Okay, um, is there any other, and I did have a meeting, I should say, with Mandy Lamont and Eddie. Um, it's been about, um, probably sometime the end of January, and I talked to them about that. And they said, I talked to Mandy and sent her an email, and she said that they were going to consider maybe doing something like that for us, putting up a fence, that they may add it, add it to the HOA documents or in the construction. And I don't think Mandy's heard, even heard anything back from them.
Do you have a lot of houses around you, or are you kind of out there by yourself?
We're kind of that out, well, we're kind of out there by ourselves on that
Okay.
that piece of property, yes.
Okay. May need to get a visual, but thank you for that. Appreciate that.
Mayor, question?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Member Stokel.
I am, I am trying to figure out where your lot is in comparison to the map that we have. I don't know if Brad, you are able to see where she's talking about, just so us as council can get a better idea of what her area is in comparison to the development.
I believe she said lot, next to lot ninety-seven?
Ninety-seven through one oh-three.
What page are we?
So you would be the, you'd own the property immediately to the east of that.
Mm-hmm.
So if you look at the plat on page three oh-five of your packet
Three oh-five.
you will see lots ninety-seven through one oh-three on the east, very far east side, southeast side of the property.
Okay, yes.
And there's some distance behind those lots to that property line, and it should be a twenty-foot landscape buffer at minimum per our code. I'd have to check the rezoning ordinance to make sure that was adhered to.
Can I ask you something?
Absolutely. Yes.
If they do put up a buffer, what happens to those plants when they die? Do they replant them?
They'd have to, uh, replant them according to the landscape plan that's approved of the site plan.
And I had sent an, an email to Mel, to, um, Megan about it, and she never responded back to me. So, because, um, Mandy gave me Megan's name to, um, to send her an email, which I have a copy of my email sent to her that I never did get a response back.
Where are the page numbers? I'm not
So, yeah, okay, if you click on it and then, that, it is confusing, because it's on Yeah, so
Your lot is a flag lot, I'm sorry, ma'am. Okay, so it looks like the property she's referring to is twenty-one sixty JJ Road.
Oh, here it is, right here.
Okay, and there's no other houses by you, and we have currently a twenty-foot buffer with landscaping?
I believe it's a twenty-foot buffer. The plat doesn't show the dimension, but I believe that the plan development, the master plan would have had to adhere to that minimum requirement at least.
Okay.
I mean, my, my husband, we couldn't even put up a privacy fence, they're like, that much higher, you know, than us. And we're like way down
That, that was going to be my other question is, yes, have you guys thought about putting up your own fence and it?
It wouldn't do us any good, because they're, they're way up here and we're way down. They built it up six foot high.
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
I mean, it's, yes, it's up six foot high.
Have we, Brad, have we asked the applicant yet about the fencing? Or do you know if that's been part of any of the discussion?
I'm, this is the first time I've been made aware of it, so I'll have to check with our staff to see what discussions have been made.
Okay. All right.
I'm glad you said that. I, I don't know that we would have known that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next card.
Stan Johnston?
Stan Johnston, eight sixty point seven avenue, uh, professional engineer. And, uh, in the, in the interest of, uh, protecting the health, safety, and welfare of the public, I think you should very much listen to Mrs., what Mrs. Scrag has to say. And she didn't mention to you anything about the health problems that, uh, her husband have. Mrs. Scrag? Mrs. Scrag?
Here, don't talk to them. Don't do that.
She didn't, she didn't, I want her to listen to what I'm saying.
You can't talk to her, that's the rules.
I did, I just did anyways.
I know, that's what you do.
I did anyways. So I want, I want you all to know is that there's some health problems within their family.
I got you.
And you've got dust, all right?
Yeah.
And that, that can be something that aggravates health problems, and you know that is you're going to have anxiety and so forth of this, which, which, which something which may not have been, occurred, is but this elevation of the, uh, of the ground that's been changed a lot to, to take away their privacy.
Yeah.
Because they moved out there because they wanted privacy. Now, I'm also, I'm also here because, um, uh, this is, this is approval of a plat. This is approval of a plat. Now, the city of Tyusville has repeatedly violated laws and, about plat laws and survey laws. And I've given you so many examples of them in, in SNJ Oaks, I mean, for example. Look here, look here, look here. Overhead electric, it's not on, it's not on the survey, it's not on the plants, it's not on the plat. But you go out there and you see it. There's electrical wires, three electrical wires going over the property, a part of the property, and it's not on the survey, not on the plants, not on the plat. How in the world can you, can the city tolerate this kind of nonsense? Violation of laws, that's what you're doing. That's not only, not only that, is that you're violating Florida Statute seven oh-four, if you want to write that down, FS seven oh-four regarding Mockingbird Lane. You get, you have all kinds of laws that you're violating, survey laws, city code, plat laws and everything like that so far on, and, and I, I send you correspondence on it, and what do you do? You do nothing. I can't, I can't imagine, I cannot imagine, I'm, I've been a surveyor too for twenty-eight years, registered surveyor, and I cannot imagine somebody, any surveyor, doing what we're doing. In fact, is, in that, in this particular project, the survey has, I've talked to the surveyor and he disagrees with what was what the city has done.
This one?
This one. He disagrees with, he disagrees with what the city has done. The city has allowed this relocation of Mockingbird Lane, the sketch plat eight foot wide.
Not this one.
No, he, he did it. So, it's not this one. And this has to do with final plats. So, in other words, would you review final plats? Is the city of Tiesville, uh, is, are you competent enough to review plats? When you make so many mistakes, even though I'm pointing the mistakes out? This is nonsense. It's nonsense. It's nonsense what the city is doing. And I'm telling you, violation of laws, and what do you do? You ignore it. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
God bless you.
All right, um, any other card? Uh, applicant? And certainly you can understand more about the, you guys are up six feetish. Yeah, I, I can, I feel her pain. I don't know what your role is in that. And Brad, you may, you know, perk up here and help me out, but go ahead and give me your take.
So, at the beginning of this project, the construction plans were approved on a set of conditions of approval that spoke to the concerns that, of the neighbors and residents that existed around our project. Specifically, lots ninety-seven through one hundred and three are going to maintain a single-family story. So, privacy of, of that single family will, for a second floor, will not be allowed. So, they will have only single families along those lots. In addition, there is actually above and beyond the twenty-four enforced, or the twenty-foot enforced buffer, there is seventy-three feet closest to her property, um, buffer between her line and the, the building pad or the, the house for that future development. Um, on the back end, it's another seventy feet. What you'll see there also is, beginning the project, we met with the arborist and Chris Enright with inspection and walked that line and decided to instead of remove all of the Brazilian pepper trees, I believe they're called, that were existing that stood about thirty feet. We left all of those there to add an additional buffer during construction to remain throughout development of those homes. So, while we can't enforce a privacy fence on each of those lots, that will be up to those future residents. We can encourage possibly through, um, the sales efforts, um, the option to do so, they will have that, but they will, it will be at the discretion of each lot owner for those lots. In addition, next to her property, there is a stormwater track, which is a pond that'll add an additional buffer for privacy.
Did, where's, and again, I'm not familiar with it to the point that you are by any means, but was there a familiarity with the possibility, once the trees go down, et cetera, et cetera, which is a whole nother, you know, cake mix? I can feel that she, you know, she's six feet below and it's basically got, doesn't have the trees it used to have. Is there any, um, any buffering that you can do for that side of the street or that side that they're just, well, the east?
So, there, there will be the existing Brazilian peppers down there and then some landscaping along that swale that'll add as an additional buffer, nothing is exceeding that, that, the height of the existing trees at this time.
Okay, any questions from council? I don't know that we're going to have the final answer on solving that. I wouldn't mind being, having those here that there's a little discussion between you all, but that being said, Member Nelson?
So, I'm curious, um, and I haven't been up there probably a year. So, how far along are you in the development, in the building?
So, we, before getting the plat fully recorded, the vertical construction has not begun. So, all of the development horizontal construction has, um, fully finished. Roads are paved, curb is in, um, all of the earthwork is now, should be stabilized out there with seed and mulch and the grass that'll be along the right of way within the community.
So, basically, at this point, you have sand lots.
Yeah, so, so the, the, with inspection of, through the city, the contractor did have to disturb the earthwork in order to get it to final grade, but that's now been completed and stabilized.
And stabilized how?
Oh, with seed and mulch. So, it's a seed that goes down all over all vacant, you know, substantial land quality and then grass will grow. And that is happening.
Has it happened?
It's already, it's, it's established. I've mowed it twice and it's quite the ordeal.
I guess that was my question, are you mowing it?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Okay, so.
They're erosion control measures they have to adhere to. So, during construction, yes, there may be some dust that may pick up, but they eventually will have to provide or adhere to erosion control measures, including sodding where it needs to be, making sure all that doesn't happen.
Okay.
So, that should get better then? The dust issue is getting better?
It, it should have stopped by now.
And then, the next question I had, when we initially, when this initially came before us, we didn't ask for any barriers between the Scrag's home and the, the development, did we?
The conditions state. The conditions in the planned development rezoning ordinance that was approved in twenty eighteen says, "A twenty-foot buffer perimeter landscape buffer will be established consistent with the code. A minimum seventy-foot buffer, which includes the twenty-foot buffer required perimeter landscape buffer and the twenty-foot rear lot setback to the property line along the north and east property boundaries, with the exception of lots thirty and thirty-one." So, it looks like there's a seventy-foot distance that's supposed to be established. On the plat, or I'm sorry, on the master plan that was approved in two thousand and eighteen, I see that labeled on this, this particular area that's in question. And then, on the plat itself, I don't see the measurement described on there. And I'm just eyeballing it here, it looks like the same distance. I'm looking at the right of way, it should be fifty feet width, and then the area I see east of lots ninety-seven through one oh three looks like the same, but I'd have to measure it myself to be able to confirm that. So, if you want that question answered, I won't be able to give you that answer tonight.
Okay. I think at the, that point, we were more interested in making sure we save some of the trees around the perimeter, but the idea of providing some, yeah.
You have to, uh, at least put in the minimum plantings that are required for a landscape code for landscape yards and buffers. If they want to utilize existing vegetation to count towards those buffers, that would have to be identified. That should have been done during the site plan process, it would have been, had to have been done prior to them coming to this stage. So, what they are putting in there or what they're keeping has to be consistent with that approved site plan.
Okay, thanks.
Member Stokoe.
Yes, um, so if I heard you correctly, they have to meet, have a seventy-foot buffer right now per the conditions? Is that correct?
Conditions describe that. I cannot tell you.
But they won't be able to do it if they don't meet that condition?
This plat should not have come before you if it didn't meet that condition.
Okay, so there should be a seventy-foot buffer?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, and then, I guess my thing is, when I'm thinking like landscape buffer, I don't, I'm thinking like higher trees. So, like I'm envisioning, that's the Scrag's house right there, and then this is the new development, we're up higher. So, I see the point, if you're trying to build a fence, good luck, I can still kind of see you type thing. Do we know with that landscape buffer? Will it be high? Will it be low? Do we know any of those specifics right now?
Well, the landscape code requires a certain number of what are called over, what we define in the code as overstory trees, understory trees and, um, canopy trees and, and bushes as well. So, it has a minimum that you're supposed to plant per fifty, per certain number of feet. And so, that had to be demonstrated with a landscape plan. Of course, if they want to identify or utilize an existing tree that's already there to count towards one of those types of trees, they would have had to identify that in the plan. So, it does get very specific.
Do we have that landscape plan yet at this point?
Oh, yeah, this would have been, they wouldn't have been able to get to this stage unless, until they've gotten that approved. And that is something you submit during the site plan stage. So, what happened was, we're at the final stage, we're almost the final stage of this whole project, as far as approvals. The planned development, the zoning was put on there, then they went through sketch plat, and that's conceptual drawing to you. Then it went through preliminary plat and site plan, and that's an administrative process that includes that landscape plan.
Okay.
That's their, and once they get approved, then they go forward with construction.
Okay.
And that's what they're doing right now. And so, now they're trying to get, as a construction, going through the construction, they're finalizing the plat, the final plat. Real giving you true identification where, and layout of where the lots are going to be.
Okay. I know this, this is the first time you're hearing about this fencing issue, I guess, but in your opinion, do you feel like we have any other options? Or do you feel like, once this landscape buffer is in place and they have all the trees there that are supposed to, do you feel like that is probably the best option at this point? Do you feel like we have any other options considering the concern?
Well, the question, I mean, so I'm looking at this further and as you're asking me these questions here and up, and it says seventy-foot buffer, but it also includes a twenty-foot setback. So, it looks like it's fifty feet from the rear property line to the, of each of the new platted lots, to the, the entire project property lines, that's fifty feet. And then, it includes, to make up that seventy feet, the extra twenty feet there, it's on each of the lots, I think. Yeah, these are questions I can't give you a good answer for. If you'd like, I can get back to you if you want to table this to your next meeting, so I can give you clearer answers as to compliance and making sure that this plat is done correctly.
Okay, um, I, I mean, I would, I don't like to hold things up, but if we feel like tabling it would give us clearer answers that we're having concerns, just to make sure. I don't want to, I, my fear would be to approve something that we had some leeway or to make things better and we just didn't do it.
The, the question about, um, fencing, I don't see that in the, in the conditions of the PD.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see how fencing would work here. My concern would be to have some type of landscape barrier to give them some more privacy. I, I, to your point, I don't see how a fence would be feasible in this option.
I do have our landscape plans pulled up and I can speak to the planned landscaping along that twenty-foot buffer that is in addition to the fifty feet that Mr. Parrish spoke about, from the, the building pad to where our landscaping begins. So, along her property line, you'll see that there are, um, a multiple live oaks, sixty-five gallon live oaks that will get planted, as well as, um, three gallon by Burnham bush hedge throughout, from lots one oh three all the way down to the, to the right of way, um, on JJ Road. In addition to that, there'll be forty-five gallon slash pines, um, planted and thirty gallon crepe myrtles. And that's covering, uh, from just a quick count, fifty trees along that, that whole row. So, not, in addition to the fact that we didn't remove all the Brazilian pepper trees that lined her property line.
Okay.
Which were part of the clearing plan. So, we went above and beyond to maintain as much privacy as we could because we had authorization to remove all of that and didn't.
Okay. I would be, before, I would table it for more information, I, if possible, mayor, I would like to hear from the concerned citizen, just to clarify, if possible, that I would, I don't know if anybody else would.
So, what do you want to do?
I would like to hear back from the concerned citizen, just because I feel like we have one concerned citizen that it sounds like she probably hasn't been communicated with. So, I would like to know her concerns, but so I can make a better decision on if I would want to table or if I feel comfortable going forward.
So, attorney?
Right, just remember, you're at the final plat stage and, and the first half. So, you're, you need to analyze this, make sure it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, the preliminary plat meets code, and that's what you're looking at tonight.
Right, that's my point with this buffer, the seventy-foot buffer, the twenty, that is kind of what I would like to have clarified.
Right, and the question is, is, is Brad, is there a master plan associated with this?
A master plan was approved of the rezoning in twenty eighteen.
Right, so the key is, is this consistent with that and consistent with the preliminary plat? It's not redoing the master plan and imposing additional conditions?
I'm not wanting to redo it.
Also, make sure, as you're looking at this, you aren't, the question is, you know, does it meet the master plan? Is it consistent with the preliminary plat? Is it consistent with the comprehensive plan and does it meet code?
Yes, that's what I'm getting at with this buffer question I have.
Any other questions? Uh, Member Stokoe, you still, you done?
Yeah, I would just like to hear from the citizen again, if possible.
All right, wait, uh, come on up, citizen. I'd call you by a real name, but I don't really remember it. So, what is it? It's Brad, I'm glad you're here.
Yes, ma'am.
Ask your questions.
Yeah, I just, I, hearing that, I, we have limited options at this point. Um, I don't think the fence would be feasible, um, just because I could see the issues with that. So, I feel like at this point, the best that we have to offer is this buffer, this landscape buffer. And now, hearing from the applicant, the plans that they have with the live oak, the crepe myrtles, the slash pines, um, it sounds like they are doing what they can to have some type of buffer that is consistent, as the city attorney said, with the master plan, with our comp plan. Did you have any additional questions or concerns from your standpoint? I don't, um, visit this area often, so I would appreciate anything if you see something that we just might not know about, um, so we can make a better decision.
Okay, um, they said they didn't clear some of the property that, they left, that was our property. They did try to clear it. And we were sitting down.
Are you talking about the Brazilian peppers?
Yeah, but there's some other trees there too.
Okay.
And we were sitting in our garage and all of a sudden, we see this machine come down and it started taking our trees down. And if we hadn't have been sitting there in our garage, they would have wiped out part of our property.
Okay.
So, that was really bad. If we hadn't have been home.
Glad you were in your garage.
Yeah, okay.
We were just having to be sitting out in the garage, and it happened at four o'clock in the afternoon of all, you know, we were just having to be sitting out there. And here they come. So, we did get, we did save some, a little bit of our property.
Okay.
We were able to save some of it. But, and that seventy-foot, if I'm not, if I'm correct, it's a twenty-foot buffer, but the other fifty-foot goes up to their house, am I correct? That's not part of the buffer, that goes up to the structure, am I correct?
I, I believe what I'm reading in the, in the conditions of the master plan, and this should be, so this, again, this plat would have to be consistent with it, is that you have the lot, the single-family lot that's supposed to be created on each, this row here, and the back twenty feet of that lot is supposed to count towards that seventy feet. And then, behind the lot, there's a distance between the lot being created and the project boundary, and that's fifty feet. And twenty-foot buffer is supposed to be within that. That's how it looks like it's illustrated to me on the master plan. And this sketch, uh, master, this, uh, plat looks like it's consistent with that. But I don't have the measuring tool to confirm that for you, that's what I don't have this evening.
Okay.
Uh, and I think Member Stokoe is right, we're limited on what we can do at this point. But I think that the buffering, um, you know, and, and whatever they can put in there is important because you've brought some things out that we certainly weren't aware of. Um, hopefully, they're saying the grass should be growing, that the sand and the dust should be less.
I have to tell you, they did, I counted a year and a half because they did plant some this spring, but it took it a while to come up. So, it's just now taken.
So, hopefully, that should make that better. That sounds rough.
I agree with that. They did plant some in this past spring, but it's been the previous times that when the wind come out of the west, oh my stars, it was terrible.
Well, I'm glad that's getting better and I hope we can come up with a buffer to kind of block you away from all of that.
Yeah, but I was just concerned about privacy. Like swimming in our pool or whatever. These people are way up here and we're way down here. And no one ever told us that they were going to be six foot higher than us, or we would have kind of tried to negotiate a privacy fence then.
Yep.
But now, we can't even, we can't even put one up if we wanted to.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you so much. Uh, Vice Mayor?
Yes, has, my question, has the property that being developed always been higher?
No. That was always the same as we were until they started.
So, they built it up?
All the, the purposes. Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, I don't need to call the applicant back up or anything, right? Yeah, okay. Well, then, council, we've got to make a decision on where you're going with this. Uh, it's, it's on the board here for approval of final plat and acceptance of covenants, bonds, and easements. Um, I see people thinking, Vice Mayor?
Uh, I think that with where we are, uh, we only have, being this quasi-judicial, we only have one direction that we can go.
That does, that does make sense.
Hmm.
You, you make a point.
Without a, without a good justification of, of changing that.
Good point. Member Stokoe?
No, I tend to agree. I would just like to clarify that, just for future projects, Brad, can you just explain how, if the property wasn't going to be six feet up originally, how it is now, and how that's allowed?
I, I can't give you a good answer than that, other than that, it probably, they, this site plan or this plat wouldn't have been able to get to this stage, until they get a site plan approved, that's consistent with all requirements, including stormwater retention and drainage requirements. If that had required bringing fill on the property, that's possible.
Okay.
I'd give you the details about that, and how that was approved, or what specifically was brought on the property, I'd have to check into that.
Yeah, no, that was just a good question from Vice Mayor, that I just hadn't thought of, and what that process would look like, so. Um, but yeah, I feel like, at this point, to Vice Mayor's uh point, it is quasi-judicial. I think we are limited on what we can do. I do feel better about um how large the buffer is, and that there, there will be significant landscaping. Um, I, I think, just given the situation we're in now, um, I would move forward with it, with the conditions.
Member Nelson?
I agree with you guys, although I would like to make sure that, going forward, we don't have any other developments that are raised six feet. Um, and I'm not sure how to accomplish that.
Not sure how that happens. All right, some way or another, I need a motion or no motion. We need to make a movement here. Vice Mayor?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I recommend approval of the final plat and acceptance of the covenant, performance ban, and um easement for Brook Landing Phase One. And that, uh, we have to trade for.
My motion from Vice Mayor Robinson.
I, I'd like to clarify this, are we also removing the MSTU in 602J? MSTU and BSTU?
Yeah.
You want the summary background on, on the plaque?
Yeah.
Is that correct, City Attorney?
Yes, sir.
And I would second.
I don't want to have to review the whole motion, but tell me the part that, that we're.
I think it's with a recommendation that P and Z.
I read the recommendation, she read the expansion of the summary.
Yeah.
Uh, planning a zoning, um, suggested removing in section 4.08, the reference to the BSTU and MSBU. And that was done. Um, but that was also mentioned in 6.02J, and I was suggesting that we remove it from that section also.
And we did that, that's, that's the motion, right?
And, I, I didn't hear, but your motion, did that include, uh, the performance bonds? 'Cause I didn't quite hear it all, but I know the recommended action is approve final plat and covenants for Brook's Landing Phase One, except covenants, easements, and performance bonds for completion of required infrastructure and sidewalks.
Yes. All right, I have the motion from Vice, no, I have the motion. No, he made, Vice Mayor made the motion, and Member Nelson gave the second amendment.
Yeah.
And I need a roll call vote.
I just want to confirm, too, the motion captured the document that Brad distributed. It did?
Right.
Yes.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes. Passes unanimously. Okay, we move to petitions or requests, take two. If you haven't come up yet for petitions or requests, you may do so now.
When people buy a home, most people, I think, I, I'm taking this just from having lived a long time and heard a lot of things, I don't have any real facts and research to back this up, like I normally bring to you when I speak. But when people buy a home, they kind of are making a major investment, and a lot of people, I think, figure, this is where I'm gonna live, raise my family, and die. And when they have a few empty places around, empty lots, um, you kind of figure that something's gonna happen there, and you're not really sure what. Um, in my case, I was able, fortunate enough, to purchase the lot, empty lot next door to my historic home, so that I can guarantee what will happen there while I am alive. And I just feel so sorry for people who buy a place that was in an established neighborhood, like in the nineteen forties and nineteen fifties, and everything around, you know, these places are kind of old, even historic now. Um, and, and you think, this neighborhood, I like the way it looks, I like the way it is, it's, it's conducive to the kind of life I want to live, and then somebody comes in and buys some acreage in your area, and tears down all the trees, didn't we, aren't buffers supposed to be buffers? And we're talking about denuding the land, and then going back and planting crepe myrtles, which aren't really trees, and leaving Brazil peppers, which are invasive. And being a member of the tree team, I'm just horrified when I see properties, large acres of properties, being denuded of the trees that are there. Why can't, Brad, why can't buffers be the existing foliage and trees, instead of taking everything down and then planting? One ga, how long does it take a one-gallon crepe myrtle to grow? I've been living at my house now six years, and we had a crepe myrtle there that's, I guess Ms. Norwood planted those things, 'cause the stalks, the stems, the trunks are big, you know? We cut them back every year, so it's not humongous. But my point is, it takes a long time for oak trees to grow, and even slash pine trees, and even the lowly crepe myrtle. And so for a developer to come in and clear-cut properties and not leave those extant, that are, the things that exist already, to leave them, it's just really depressing and sad, and I feel so sorry for people that that happens to.
Thank you so much. Uh, petition requests, second time around. I don't think there's too many, too many left. What happened?
Oh, just looking for people to.
Oh, okay, okay. Uh, all right, um, nobody else petition requests? Make sure, make sure, make sure. Okay, good, thank you. Uh, mayor's report, and et cetera, et cetera. Um, I just got a couple of small things. One is I, one of my second ride-along with TPD in the last month, uh, this time with my former wide receiver, Telly Joyner, and he's also my former ninth-grade basketball player, Telly Joyner. I'm very proud of Lieutenant Joyner. He is, uh, I don't know exactly if he's like the supervisor or what, but he helps run the Titus Junior Terrier Football League, and he spends a lot of time there, and I found out when I went out, my grandson's now playing in that league. Um, there are numerous police officers that are helping, volunteering their time, they may not get to stay the whole time, but when they have time, they're going out there and volunteering their ti, volunteering their time. When I went out one time, there were six officers out there helping run practice. Um, I was pretty impressed by that. Uh, I didn't realize that till I got out there, and now I talked to Telly about it, it's absolutely true. Um, I also got to go to the Lockheed Martin ribbon-cutting of their warehouse facility, and I can only tell you that that is a very impressive facility, uh, with very impressive plans for our area. Um, they are, are part of the reason, along with many of the other companies that have chosen Titusville, that um were able to uh lower taxes and uh set some records in that way. But, uh, very exciting things going on here, but the things I like to notice most are when people are volunteering and helping kids, and doing, you know, putting the we before the me, and I appreciate that very much. Uh, I went that way last time, well, no, there's only one this way, we'll go this way.
I have two things. One, there was a discussion last meeting about testing the storm water. Remember that? And there were some citizens that were not happy. Um, so my thought was, we need to find out why the county isn't testing the storm water, and what's the reason, what gives. So I called Virginia Barker, and for those that don't know her, she is the Director of Natural Resources for the county, and she also spearheaded our House Sales Tax Save Our Lagoon as Citizens, Citizens Group. So what she told me was, we know what's in the lagoon, and she said, these are the ways we would have to, what we would have to do to test the water. Um, and she goes, to be honest with you, we know what's in there, and we know what we need to do. So I would rather spend money on getting the river clean than testing it more. So I think that's our answer.
I think that's what they said.
I think so. So, and the second thing that I sort of want to ask you guys, is Brad Parrish, many years ago, brought us a ordinance for cluster development with the golf courses, that Joe wasn't here, Sarah, Dan, and I were here, and I liked it at the time.
I did, too.
And Royal Oak came in, stomped their feet, and basically adamantly opposed it, and I still think it's a good idea, and I would like to see us reexamine that. So, what do you guys think?
Well, I think as we move forward, and I think it's been a little discussion, I actually think some Royal Oak people have talked about that recently. So I think it'll have to play out, and, and really get an idea of, that, make sure they know what it is, and, and how, 'cause some people have talked to us, and all we could say is, well, we tried to do that.
Right.
So I think it may get a second time at bat. Um, so I, yeah, I'd like to see it play out, and um, again, I, sometimes I like to get a better idea of what, you know, the people are thinking, and I think it can be the win-win.
So maybe ask Brad to do a presentation on it?
He's not here. Uh, City Manager, what do you think?
Um, what, since you're, you're asking to create a, an agenda item, is what I'm hearing, so um, how about if we um do advisability at your next meeting?
Okay.
To see if council, with an agenda item, would like to pursue information about the previous ordinances that were developed for redevelopment of golf courses.
That sounds like a good plan.
Well, that gives us time to, you know, kind of think about it, and get a little more information on it, and remind ourselves exactly what it was when we about had it last time. But I do think I'm starting to hear some people out there who are saying, hey, gotta do something with this.
Well, uh, you know, right now, nothing's going on.
No, there's nothing.
And, you know, golf courses seem to be sort of going the way of the dodo bird. So while we're at it, we might as well decide how we want it, what we want to see, uh, in the future.
I think it's a good idea, I do.
Yeah.
Um, I, I think City Manager's idea of, you know, let's, you know, get in, at the next meeting, we'll have some time to think about it, and have some better questions and direction for Brad, and I think that may be a move.
Okay, sounds good.
Good. Uh, City, City Manager, Vice Mayor?
Again, I've, I've been, um, I, I've been on a couple of vacations, and went to Texas, and uh, you know, it's hot, but it's no hotter there to me than it is here in Florida, it just, uh, but I had a wonderful time with my, uh, my siblings, uh, the one with Sal, and uh, my, and my daughter and her children, and that was a wonderful time. Um, yesterday, when we came back, we had a beautiful breakfast with the school resource officers. I thought that that was super.
Yes.
I thought that that was super, and the presentation was very informative for, for me, uh, and uh, and I think that, I thought that was right. Uh, the other day, and I shared a little bit, and I can't share a whole lot, because I hadn't got the package in the mail, uh, I have been selected for an award for all of the uh soda cans that I've picked up in North Bivard, the thing that I've done in North Bivard, uh, on the nineteenth of August, and as I get it, and I know that I'm gonna share it with the City Manager, and if any of you, you know, it has a cost, you can make it, and it'd be appropriate, I would love for you to be, love for you to be there.
Do you know where we'll be?
Uh, uh, no, I do not. The package hasn't came in the mail, it's, yeah.
Yeah, that's awesome, congratulations.
All right.
Yes, ma'am, Mr. Stokoe?
Pass.
You didn't win.
I'm, I.
You didn't win an award or anything?
No, I missed you.
I, I haven't either, but it's somewhere. And I miss you guys that I had to miss. I don't know why, I, I had another meeting, that's anyway.
I'm sure you did. Uh, City Attorney? I'm sorry, I go the other way, don't I? City Manager?
Uh, yes, sir, at the beginning of the meeting, I proposed a new agenda item, and it's a, a time-sensitive TPO request for a letter of endorsement to support the Ellis Road multimodal project discre, discretionary grant, the federal grant. You have the letter before you, and what council would be doing is authorizing the mayor to sign that letter, and we'll get it back to the TPO in the morning.
And this basically benefits our neighbors to the sound.
It does, yes, sir.
It's just kind of a goodwill, we're with you, type of thing.
And Ellis Road, as the Vice Mayor knows, uh, serving on the TPO, it's a very challenging project, and I think they, they definitely need this grant in order to, to move forward with it.
You're being, uh, the Secretary of the Board for the Space Coast Transportation uh organization, it's uh, uh, and if you've ever driven to Melbourne and had to take Ellis Road, it, you know what, the support of that would, would be outstanding.
All right, well, before we do that, obviously, uh, I'm sure there's a card.
Stan Johnston?
Ellis Road.
Ellis Road?
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, uh, my name is Stan Johnston, I'm a professional engineer, and I don't like the way you're conducting business, is that you're, you're concealing, you're concealing and you're covering up fraud by your City Manager.
Stop, no, we're not going there. We're asking you, we're talking about Ellis Road, I'm not sure you know where Ellis Road is.
That's in Melbourne.
So, do you want us to approve this or not?
Well.
We're trying to help them.
I, I think you should, you should, you should stop business and, and, and take care of business here, because you're avoiding, you're avoiding the fraud, and you're, and the three people here, it's Mr. Diesel, uh, Attorney Nelson, and Dr. Stokoe are still involved with this. You were here when it happened, so that's all.
All right, thank you. All right, do we have a motion for Ellis Road? Uh, and now, this motion is just to.
So what, what, what your council will be authorizing is the mayor to sign a letter of support for the grant opportunity for the Ellis Road project.
So moved.
I have a motion.
Second?
All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Come on, don't drive again. All in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Oh, Stokoe's gone. Um, just for that, let's do, let's do roll call vote, so I know that I have three.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
And Member Stokoe's absent.
Passes with three.
And the final is just the, um, the workshops that are coming up. You have an August workshop, followed by your two public hearings for the budget that's upcoming.
All right. Now, City Attorney, anything?
No, sir.
Glad to hear that. Uh, with that said, heating attorney.